The moderators that you have your your hands raised and will unmute you to speak. So with that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 4:03. This is the April 22nd regular meeting of the governing board of Monterey Peninsula Community College District. And can we have a
Thank you. Yes, roll call. Chair Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Stack.
Here.
Trustee Green.
Here.
Trustee Dungustason.
I'm here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Student trustee Robert Mountain is delayed. Interim superintendent president David Martin.
Here.
Wonderful. We are all here.
Great. Alrighty, so next we have the pledge of allegiance. Trustee Johnson, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And folks, if you can stand here, Marilyn's got a flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Alright, so next we have a report out of action taken in closed session, and there is no action to report. D is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda today? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Forget to unmute myself. Chair Anderson.
Hi.
Vice Chair Stack. You're unmuted. Stack. Vice Chair Stack. Unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now.
Hello? Well, you can hear me. So it takes a while if I unmute myself before it, before the unmuting occurs. Didn't know that.
Thank you. Trustee Green.
Hi.
Trustee Dungustason. She raised her thumb. She's an I.
I did. I.
Thank you. Trustee Rick Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Um, quick note, if you didn't know, if you're on mute, you can quickly hit your spacebar, and that will unmute you just for a second, and then you let it go and you're back on mute. So we need it. Alright, so next we have acknowledgements of guests. Mr. Martin, we have any guests that we want to acknowledge?
Oh, we don't have any guests at this time, other than the distinguished members of our Lobo community joining us this afternoon. But as we move through the agenda, if guests appear, I will ask the chair to acknowledge them at that point. Thank you.
And during Sean, I'm going to turn the chime off just because it drives me crazy.
Oh, sure.
Alrighty, um, so that next we have a moment of silence for Mr. Frank Barrows Automotive Technology Department. Mr. Barrows was a instructor in our automotive technology department from 1984 until his retirement in 2004, and he passed away on March 21st of 2020. So we appreciate his service and wish his family all the best during this time of grieving. Is there anybody who wanted to say anything? Go ahead.
No, sure, sure. This is Jill Zandi. I'm the associate director of the MAIT Center, and I'd been asked just to say a few words about Frank, and I'm really honored and pleased to be able to do that. Frank was an amazing individual and played a huge role in the MAIT Center and in us using underwater robotics to teach science, technology, engineering, and math. And he certainly helped lay the foundation for what is the Global MAIT ROV Competition. You know, Frank, he never, if you knew him, he never shied away from a challenge. And so when we first approached him, and gosh, I think it was 1999, about working with us to develop an underwater robotics course and curriculum, he jumped right on board. The fact that he is, was an ocean lover and an avid sailor and a longtime volunteer at the Monterey Bay Aquarium, I think that helped convince him to work with us. He was an amazing instructor and probably one of the most patient people I have ever known. And I really feel that, you know, reflecting on him, he so embodied the MPC spirit to really help students and everyone reach their full potential and bring them up and help them to, you know, achieve their dreams. I mean, he was a really wonderful instructor, and I think I had sent a note out to the MAIT's competition community about Frank, and one of the folks who received that was Mr. Harry Bohm, who worked really closely with Frank to develop a submersible technology course and the curriculum and the MAIT textbook that came out of that. And, you know, Harry, I just want to read what Harry said. He said, "I was always in awe of Frank's ability to instruct complicated subjects with clarity and enthusiasm," and of course, his wonderful graphics. So, you know, Frank, he, I have to say, when he retired, he really retired. He moved back to Hawaii, to the big island, and I imagine he spent his days sailing and scuba diving and exploring the ocean that he so loved. And I'd like to think of him doing that now, right? Sailing, sailing the heavens and exploring new realms. And so thank you for the opportunity to say something about Frank. He was really amazing, and again, a real, real asset to MPC and to MAIT and development of our programs.
Thank you for that, Jill. Lovely. Alright, so next on our agenda is public comment. This is a time for individuals to address the board on any items that aren't on the agenda, and I see Lyndon has his hands up. Go ahead, Lyndon.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. But first, about Frank Barrows, I wanted you to know that for many years, he was, we used to have a nautical science department where we taught sailing, and we had five sailboats down in Monterey Harbor. And Frank was very involved with that, and which, which I think was a challenge to put novices out on the bay in sailboats, and Frank did it very well. So I thought you would like to know that. But while I had my hand up, I wanted to, typically this time of year, I would bring some student athletes to the board meeting and introduce them and talk about their accomplishments. And since we're not able to do that, I thought I would just share a little information about the status of athletics. First of all, the CCAA has deemed that spring sports athletes will receive another year of eligibility, and this has been supported by the NCAA and the NAIA, who are doing the same for their athletes. This week, the CCAA Board, which is made up of college presidents from throughout the state, voted to relax some of the eligibility requirements to assist students with both eligibility, excess units, and the number of full-time semesters that affect their four-year eligibility. So there'll be more, more to come on that, but there, obviously, there are some challenges for all our students completing their coursework in a change venue, and the CCAA is responding to this. I thought I would let you know, the spring would have been a great banner year for our sports. Our softball team was 16-2, top 5 in the state. Our baseball team was 15-7, had a nine-game winning streak, and was 5-0 in conference. Track team had 40-plus athletes, several who had already achieved Northern California qualifying times. And tennis had the number one, number one doubles team in the conference and a winning record and was, was off to probably some bid to the, to the NorCal and state championships. And then I wanted to share about our Cuttino Award winners, our outstanding male and female sophomore athletes who we typically present at the Lobo Hall of Fame. Obviously, that event was canceled this year, so we didn't get to present Jocelyn Cesares, the female winner, basketball and track, very successful, and a 3.4 GPA. And Rashawn Wilkins from football, who was a defensive tackle and carried a 3.6 GPA. And Rashawn shared with me what he would have said at the Lobo Hall of Fame, and it was so good that I, I thought I would just read it real quick to you. And so here's Rashawn's words. "Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to thank God for today. Thank God for His grace and mercy over me throughout my life. Today, I am honored for the opportunity to stand before you all this evening. I would like to thank the Cuttino family for this prestigious award. It is a reminder that it truly takes a village to move each person forward, and for that, I am extremely grateful, and I thank you. On June 16th, 2019, I walked onto the Monterey Peninsula College campus to continue my studies and football career, in which I was extremely nervous. I was far away from my home in Chicago and was taking a huge chance. It was a chance that many people tried to talk me out of. Honestly, I had a few things that I brought with me on the plane, and I had a couple dollars in my pocket. But most importantly, I came with a hope and a prayer that MPC would be the place, the collegiate home where I could catapult my football career. Today, due to that chance, due to that hope, and that daily prayer, I stand before you as a prospect student athlete for Vanderbilt University, where I've received a full ride scholarship. For that, I want to say thanks to the entire football coaching staff for opening your arms and hearts to an unknown Chicago kid that simply wanted to play and win football games. Playing for you guys and winning the bowl game is a lifelong memory I will cherish. Thank you to my D-line coach, Coach Warren. You guided and developed me into a caliber player worthy to play ball in the SEC. I cannot say thank you enough. I know you got tired of me bothering you with 10 million questions, but hey, I wanted us to be the best D-line in Lobo history. Coach Rass, my honest and serious thanks to you. I appreciate all your efforts in molding the Lobos into a winning team. Coach, I hope we made you proud. I know it wasn't the USC's keeping us in line, not only on the football field, but to give our best in the classroom. I, Rashawn Wilkins Jr., will do my utmost best to make all of the Monterey Peninsula College community proud. I will carry all the lessons I learned here in my mind, hold all the memories in my heart. Thank you, and go Bows." And I hope, and that would be my message today. Alright, and Rashawn. Rashawn was a wonderful young man. He, in high school, he went to Mount Carmel High in, in, outside of Chicago in Illinois. He was a wide receiver in high school, but he grew into a 6'3", 300-pound defensive lineman. He, he said, "I just kept getting bigger." And now, and now he's going to attend Vanderbilt, which is known as the, you know, the highest academic standing college in the SEC, and obviously, one of the elite academic universities in the United States. I'm very proud of Rashawn. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing all that, Lyndon. It's nice to have something to feel happy and emotion and proud about, and I hope that you will share with both of the Cuttino winners our excitement and pride in their work, and the best wishes for their
Thank you.
careers.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, a public comment on an item that's not on the agenda today? Again, if you're joining via computer, you can go to the participants tab and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, if you hit star 9, it will indicate that you have your hand raised, and we can unmute you. Alright, seeing no one, we'll close public, public comment. And we reorganized the agenda just a little bit today to, to get some reports to help frame discussions later. So we will move to item 6A, which is the ASMPC report. Is there anyone here from ASMPC to Seeing no one, I don't know if any of the board members had any comments or questions they wanted to raise and have forwarded to the student body. Alright, seeing none, the report will be deemed received. Next, we have item 6B, the Academic Senate Report, and I see Adria on the line, so I'm going to unmute you. And thank you for the report.
Of course. I do not have anything to add, but I'll happily entertain questions.
Alright. Is there any member of the board that has a question?
No, I don't have a question, but can you hear me? But I, Adria, I really thank you for this. For years, we kept asking for these reports, and this is just great. Thank you very, very much.
It's my pleasure. I wish I could be more consistent, and that is one of my goals, to make sure I'm giving you a report every month. So I will continue to work on that. Thank you.
Well, good, because I felt like I was in the know. Thank you.
Yes, Marilyn.
And Adria, I want to just thank you for the positive tone of the report. It is delightful to read, so I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate the, the way that you and the administration, that the whole college is working together, and thank you very much for the report.
Thank you for that comment, and likewise, I'm really appreciative of the way that, as I mentioned in my report, the way everybody's come together. And this is a stressful time, but everybody has really, really worked collaboratively and collegially, and I'm just so proud of MPC, and I'm so grateful for you all. I truly am. So thank you.
And we're appreciative of your leadership, Adria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so seeing no other, we'll deem that report received, and we'll move on to the MPC EA report. Is there anyone on the call today to speak to that report? See anybody raising their hand.
Hello?
Oh, hello.
Yes, this is Kevin.
Oh, hey, Kevin. How are you?
CSCE, I'm good, right here. The report is submitted, and I'll answer any questions.
Alright, is there any member of the board that has a question or comment on the MPC EA report? No, but we appreciate, I don't know, I guess we all appreciate, I, well, I'll say particularly because there was a note that we asked for some written reports to help us, and it was, it was very nice to be able to have time to sit down and read and digest all of these things last night and in the last couple of days and put my thoughts together. So it was a lot of information, all very clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so there's no one else who has a question or comment? Lauren, it looks like you do.
I have a comment, and that is just to remind us all that there's no class without classified.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Lauren.
Stole Kevin's punchline. Alright, so next on the agenda is the MPC TA report. Anyone on the line to speak to that? Participants raise hand or star 9. Alright, seeing no one and seeing no report, we will move on to the Academic Affairs Report. John?
Hello, everyone. I tried to provide a little bit of a snapshot in my report this month to help anyone who isn't currently teaching an online class or taking a class this semester understand all of the things that are going on behind the scenes right now. We've been talking about the transition from our face-to-face classes to online, but it's for, for many people hard to imagine what that involves. And so I tried to be able to provide a snapshot of the various kinds of activities, from faculty training to the kinds of really creative work that our faculty are doing to manage this transition and get their courses online and to support our students. I'm happy to answer any questions, but hopefully that provides a little bit of a snapshot of the kinds of things that are going on. You see some really great examples of art that is being created by students in our online classes. You'll also see a little bit of information about our plans moving forward for summer with an entirely online summer schedule, and the summer printed schedule is attached to my report, and that is at the printer right now with the, with the plan for it to be in mailboxes at the end of the month around the district. And we also have been working very hard to reimagine some of our fall schedule to shift more online and into scheduled chunks of instruction that might be more flexible should we face a future interruption, so that we can be proactive at minimizing the challenges our students face and that our faculty face. And then finally, just making sure that we recognize our amazing nursing program, who just went through its accreditation review, and we received word this week, actually, that they have been granted full reaccreditation through the next cycle and won't be reviewed again until 2027. So great work for them. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions from the board? I did actually have a question, John, Dr. Cannoli. So in the looking further ahead, fall 2020, and imagining, you know, it's about various contingencies, part online, part in person, I mean, hearing lots of stories about kids or students not going the way to college and going fully online, are we really anticipating that we will have students back on campus in the fall at this point?
So we would like to be able to prepare for the likelihood of having face-to-face instruction, but should there be any form of disruption, we're prepared to very quickly have plans in place to shift online or to work towards other alternates. And so we don't want to rule out the possibility of returning to face-to-face, but we do feel that it's really important to be prepared for the possibility of not being face-to-face. There are still many conversations going on and many predictions, all ends of the spectrum. The CSU is currently talking about a potential online fall, but then their conversation shifts and they, they start talking about face-to-face as well. So with the information that we have available, we are planning to shift more online and to do more hybrid and short-term classes to minimize the disruption. But if we see any indication that we won't be able to return face-to-face, we are prepared to very quickly transition more online to be able to continue instruction. I will also just add that in terms of the impact that this is having, we're still very early to know how this is impacting our current students. But I can share that for summer, we have only been a few days into priority registration, so we're not even into open registration, and we're already seeing enrollment numbers much greater than they typically would be for, for this time of year. So we're already seeing some of our classes filling, we're already seeing our deans and our division chairs needing to talk about additional sections. So we know the students are out there, and they're waiting, and they're wanting to take classes, and we are trying to make sure that we can plan a schedule of instruction that will be one that they can count on, regardless of what kind of interruption we might face in the future.
Are you having any conversations with our local K-12s about kind of the status of their seniors and anyone thinking of deferring enrollment, and then how that might impact our schedule, you know, for general ed in the fall?
Yeah, we are talking about that, and it's still a little bit early for them to be able to share much in terms of detail, but we are having those kinds of conversations. And we do know that the CSU is allowing deferred enrollment for spring as well, so there may be more students electing to stay home in the fall, and those students would likely be turning to colleges like MPC to begin their, their instruction. And we have essentially, through shifting some of our courses online and adding some additional sections or consolidating sections, we are able to serve more students in some of the general ed areas. And so I would hope that we'd be able to absorb more enrollment, and we're also prepared to add classes where we would see even more demand than normal, if we get to see that.
John, can you tell me what is the plan for distributing this summer catalog? Because I totally agree with you that there are many college students who, for, and I love the cover of it, it economically makes sense for students, if they're going to be in an online class anyway, to take it through the community college, which is significantly less expensive than through one of the other universities.
Yes, absolutely. The summer schedule is live online right now, and students can register for classes. The PDF you see attached to my board report is a PDF of the print summer schedule, which is currently at the printers and is slated to be mailed, and it should arrive in mailboxes around our district on April 30th or May 1st, depending on the distribution and locations of, of where people are. But at the end of this month, it should begin to arrive in mailboxes around the district, and it is mailed to all residents of our district.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any member of the public like to make a comment on the report? Okay, with that, we'll thank Dr. Cannoli for the report and answering our questions. Appreciate it. And move to 6F, the MPC Office of Advancement Report. Ms. Michael.
Good afternoon, everyone. The total funds received in March 2020 was $148,990. I also just wanted to add an update to my report that so far as of today, we've raised about $65,000 for the COVID Student Relief Fund. We also worked with student services to identify other funds from the foundation side and the college side that could be used for those emergency grants, and I'm sure Larry plans to cover that in his report. But the latest numbers that I've heard, we have provided about 160 students with emergency grants, and we're at, at about $145,000 that have been awarded so far. So that has been obviously a big focus of the, of this last month. And just to add to some of the conversation around summer marketing, I know Kristin worked very closely with John on that summer schedule, and we're really proud of it. We also have threaded that theme and the terminology into other marketing efforts that are happening right now for summer, including digital advertising, radio advertising. It's obviously very online-focused, and we've also been working with the CTE Division, the dean there, and with John, Dr. Cannoli, and have some CTE-specific advertisements that we'll be rolling out soon. They're also, because of the current situation, have a very online focus, and we have something that we're holding back on that will hopefully roll out as soon as we're able to put things online. I'm sorry, as soon as we're able to have face-to-face, we'll roll those out. But in the meantime, we're heavily pushing for the online classes and focusing on summer, but with fall coming very soon. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Marilyn? You're still on mute.
I'm still on mute. Becky, can you tell me a little bit more about how you're going to do for the awarding of scholarships? Because I'm thinking specifically to our Rotary Club that awards scholarships to MPC students, and we're trying to determine the best manner of doing that.
Um, yeah, great question. So we, we have not experienced an interruption in our scholarship process other than the ceremony. So our scholarship advisory group- So our scholarship advisory group completed its review, and we actually have more awards than when I, when I wrote my report, because we had a couple other late awards come in. But we're going to be distributing the funds to students. Nearly all of them get awarded in the fall, paid in the fall. The students will be notified by next week, we'll start notifying the students. But the, the payments always get paid in the fall after the students have re-enrolled or enrolled at their transfer destination. So that's how the majority of the scholarships work. This year, as I said, we had a few late add-ons, and those folks wanted to award now because of the current situation. In particular, we had a number of nursing scholarships that were being added. And I'm not sure if Trustee Mountain was able to join us yet, but he had asked me last month about the Lydia Davis Fund. And Lynn and his daughters decided they wanted to help nursing students with their fund. And so we are awarding through the scholarship applicants, 10 nursing students, a $1,000 scholarship through that fund. So that's one example of the add-on that we had this year. We had a few others as well who contacted us and said they wanted to help different, different student groups. So we are able to pay students now if they would like, but typically, we pay them in the fall, and we felt as though, because we have emergency grants that are going out now, we really wanted to keep that money for its intended purpose and honor the donor's intent, which is to fund them after they have re-enrolled. Keep going. Keep achieving those goals. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does answer my question. But at your convenience, next week, if you could give me a phone call and perhaps give me some information about the recipient of the Rotary, Monterey Rotary scholarships, that way I can supply information to the Rotarians. And like you, we can award their checks in the fall if it is appropriate for them too, because hopefully we'll be meeting again by then.
I see. Okay, can you just clarify for me? Do the, do those funds actually come through the college or the foundation? Or do they go directly from your Rotary Club to the student?
They go directly from our club to the students.
Okay, that helps me figure out who I need to talk to to find that information. I, yes, I will circle back with you and provide that information as soon as I get it.
Thank you, dear. At your convenience, you give me a call, because I, my time is, I'm usually home.
Okay.
Other questions from board members for, go ahead, Lauren?
Yeah, can you hear me? Just two, the first one, two questions. One is very quick. There's a typo under, on the third bullet point for grants on the first page of your report, Becky. You have 75,000,000 from Union Bank Foundation, and I'm just wondering if it's 75,000 or 7500?
Unfortunately, it's 7500. I called that too just now. Yeah, it's 7500.
75,000 would have been great.
It, it sure would, yes.
But 7500 is wonderful, too. And of course, you'll, you'll thank them. I'm wonder, I noticed that, that you have applied for small business payroll kind of a loan, just in case you need it, and that just caused me to wonder, in your business, in the past month, have you noticed a downturn in, in fundraising? Clearly, everything's different now, but, but for the bottom line, has there been much change?
I'm expecting there will be a drastic change over the course of the year. We, you know, we had a number of events that were canceled, and we don't know yet whether we'll be able to hold our fundraising gala in the fall, which provides the bread and butter for the foundation's operating budget. That's why I applied for the PPP loan. Unfortunately, we did not make it in the first round, but we are on a list that is first come, first served. And so if Congress does fund, provide additional funding, we have a pretty good chance. But yeah, I think overall, what I've seen so far is just a shift from unrestricted giving to giving to our COVID-19 Student Relief Fund. And that's been intentional. That's where we've been directing our fundraising efforts. And you saw in my report, we just sent out a letter soliciting support for that. We had planned to send out a President Circle letter this month. And so instead, that would have provided unrestricted funding, but instead, we, we went for this restricted fund instead. And so we've been very fortunate to have one grant agency that contacted all of their grantees and said they're going to unrestrict their grants this year. So we have some flexibility with that. It's a, it's a small amount of money in our, in our grand scheme of things, but it still makes it an impact. And so, yeah, where the concern is unrestricted operating dollars, I believe over the course of the year, and I have presented the foundation board with two budget outlooks, two updated budgets. One is if we can have a gala, and the other is if we cannot. Both of them, we would be ending the year on a deficit. If we get that PPP loan, it would make an enormous difference. They're requesting, it was for about $77,000. So that would, it would really make things whole for us this year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks for asking that question. Lauren had the same question about the PPE loan. Thank you. I was also interested in the, some additional information on the HSI grant for student support at Marina Ed, and then also just the HAP grant concept that you all are pursuing.
Yeah. So the Title V Grant for Support at Marina, I think we called it Engage, Promote, Connect. We will find out about that in July, and we recently heard that Department of Education is expecting they will still be able to meet that timeline, that nothing has changed. So that grant, gosh, we wrote that in February, but it was, it's to put some full-time staff out at Marina Ed Center, a full-time counselor coordinator for the program, and a couple other folks that could really provide more support there in terms of meeting our district's vision to grow that center. And so it also involved some reconfiguration of the space potentially and hiring some consultants to help look into that and how we might be able to, to provide a student center-type space there so that there's more study area and also some tutoring to go with that. So, yeah, it's a very large grant. It's five years, $3 million. It's the same program as the one we currently have, except it's, they were not doing collaboratives this time. So it would just, all of that money would come to MPC if we are fortunate enough to be selected.
And it would be concurrent with our current HSI?
What was that, sorry?
It would be concurrent with the?
Yes.
So we'd have two grants going in at once?
Yes, we would, yep. And we're actually going to, if we get, if we get this grant, we're going to request from the Department of Education that we can make Diego Espinoza the project director of both. And so when we wrote the job description for Diego, we intentionally wrote it more broadly than just one Title V grant. Our goal, we'd like to keep Diego forever. I'm not sure if that's the official district position, but it's Becky Michael's position. And so we want to continue to write grants that we can maintain that position and then all the great work that has come from having an L-Centro on campus. But it takes the people, right? And so we do want to keep all the positions that are funded through the current Title V, and so we're planning to braid those and then keep them going. So, yeah, the idea is to apply for several, we're not going to wait for that grant to expire before we apply for the next one.
And before you talk about HAP, so is it? Am I understanding that in some ways, the Office of Advancement through HSI planning is taking the lead on kind of operationalizing the board's goal around Marina Ed's center status? And that might be a question for David. I don't know.
Yeah, I know. I mean, of course, David, jump in. I don't believe so, no. I think that where we are part of a team that is all working towards that collective goal, and anytime the Office of Advancement is involved in writing grants, I'm always looking to which district goal is this going to meet? With Title V, there's so much flexibility in what you can do with that money that it's really important that it ties closely to a district goal and at the same time, that it's something we think would get funded based on the parameters. And so I worked with Cabinet, everybody in Cabinet, to identify what are, what are some of the goals that we have that would also meet with the, the intent of Title V and be competitive enough to score 99 out of 100 so we can get funded? And so this one was actually David's suggestion, and then everybody came around it and just said, yeah, this would be ideal. And so we had lots of meetings with, with John and Larry and folks from their team. And it was, it was definitely a team effort. But I think that's my understanding of how that works, is our role is to bring in the money to help implement the goals. So, yeah.
Okay.
And then I would say too, once we get the money, we move on to the next grant and let other people do, do all the work of implementing them. So, and then in terms of the H-HAP, I think is how you pronounced it, that one, another student services person brought this to our attention, Eileen Crutchfield, who works in Veterans Resource Center. And so she had seen the grant opportunity and brought it to my attention and just said, this seems like something we could, we could go for. And so in working with Larry and thinking about the timeline, you know, when it first came out, it was due mid-April, and then they've extended it a couple of weeks. But we thought that our best chance would be to build it around an existing program. And so our existing Emergency Assistance Grant Program, which we have now folded this COVID Student Relief Fund into, we provide assistance to students regularly to be able to pay rent. And so what we're proposing to do with this, with this grant is to provide more rental assistance to students when they submit an emergency assistance grant form. They indicate on there what is the need, and if it's housing-related, we could then use this money for that need. And so we, I imagine that many of these could come in during COVID, and maybe some of them will, it'll go after that as well. So after, we aren't doing emergency grants for COVID specifically, but we do provide assistance for rent on a, on a regular basis. So this would, that was the connection we thought of there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? From the public? Again, if you're on Zoom, go to Participants tab and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, star nine will raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we will thank Becky for that great report and answer all our questions. And move to 6G, the Administrative Services Report. Mr. Hagler?
Hi. So my, my report has been presented, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have related to the report.
Questions from the board? Did we lose Lauren? Oh, there you are.
Sorry, 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 guys. I don't know if you can hear me, but I lost everything for a while, and it took me just till, just now to get back connected. That was about three minutes ago. I lost everybody. Sorry.
We just invited Mr. Hagler, or he just invited us, if we have any questions on the Administrative Services Report.
Thank you for asking me. No, thank you.
Okay. So Steve, I did have a question. So you mentioned in the report that you're working on the midterm accreditation reporting, and I'm just wondering, what's the timeline for that? Any sort of update or reporting coming to this board, so we can keep track on it?
For, for my, my responsibility related to the midterm report revolves around just the two actionable items. And at this point, I've drafted them, and I'm looking for Robert Pacheco to provide me some feedback. So, so I'm just a part of the report. I think that David could provide more on the timelines.
And thank you very much for that question and lead in, Steve. We are in the process of drafting the initial, first draft of our midterm report. Right now, we're putting the different components of the report together and looking at taking it out to the advisory groups here before the end of the semester. The board will receive an official update next month when we have a substantive first draft ready to go, and ultimately, we'll receive revisional updates throughout the summer before our October 15 submission deadline.
Thank you, David. And then I just had one other comment. So you mentioned in the report, and this is somewhat editorial, but you mentioned about the CARES funding that's coming and our ability to provide support to students. And I just want to encourage all of us to step out of our privilege as we think about how that funding might be used to support students. I think that the majority of people who are on this call right now are fortunate to continue to be working and receiving a regular paycheck. I'm zooming in from my home, where my family is here, and we have food on our table. And we don't know that that's the situation for all of our students right now. So as we think about how that funding can be used in accordance with guidelines that are being sent out, but really, let's, if we have opportunities to engage students and understand the situations that they're in, and what is it that they need to be able to persist in weather the storm and be able to make it back to us, either in the summer or the fall, I really think that we should be taking those steps to, to do it, because I'm in a, in a very different place than a student I spoke to who was laid off from her job, you know, a day after the shelter-in-place order went into effect, and now it's been more than a month. And that was income that she was not only using to help her educational goals, but to support her family in general. So I see Marilyn has her hand raised. Go ahead, Marilyn. That's all I have to say about that.
Well, I totally support what you're saying. And I would say that between Becky's Office of Advancement and Larry's office, I think they are reaching out in many, many ways to students. And I would look to our professionals to, to guide us and how those funds are going to be spent. I totally agree with you.
If I could comment, if I could. So, so we applied for the grant, the initial 50%, which is the emergency awards to students. We applied for that. And last week, they provided me a grant tracking number, and every day, I log on to grants.gov to follow up to see what the status is of the funds. Eventually, they'll release the funds to us through the G5 system, which is the same system where we, we get access to all Title IV monies. So we're waiting every day for them to, to provide us more information. Today, the Chancellor's Office published guidance on the money, and they're starting to talk about the other half of the money. And so everybody, I think, is looking forward to the release of those funds.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Hagler.
All right. Is there anyone, member of the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question on the Administrative Services Report? Seeing none, we will do, and the report received, and thank you.
Thank you.
And, and move to 6H, the Student Services Report. Mr. Walker?
You have my written report, and again, excuse me for the typos that are embedded in there. I'm sure you all have found a couple, if not more than a couple. And those, if you email me, I'll give you a prize. But with that being said, just wanted to highlight some certain areas within the context of the report. Under the first bullet, that all student services have transitioned to a virtual format, just wanted to highlight the work that our counselors are doing. Normally, our latest shift of serving students was about 6 o'clock. We have expanded our hours to begin to serve students through 8:00 PM and sometimes beyond that. This virtual format has definitely opened up an opportunity to expand our hours in a way that's not only conducive to the students, but some of our employees who are working remotely, who have children, who are working and trying to juggle those things. Sometimes, working in the evening is more preferential for them. So under the leadership of the Division Chair, Alethea De Soto, we've looked at the schedule and have been able to expand our counseling hours beyond, almost to 8 o'clock, and times beyond. I've even seen some responses over the weekend. That's great to know. In addition to that, we, the normal 30-minute counseling session has been moved to an hour since May. since March 30th. To accommodate the varied needs of students that are beyond the academic needs, students are presenting different things and different needs that are beyond just academic, as you would imagine. So the hour appointment seemed to be working well in meeting the needs of our students. Underneath, still that same bullet of transitioning student services, just highlighting the fact that many of our student services programs has moved to a virtual open support service concept where they're having open hours to allow students to come in virtually and just check in. The goal is to maintain a meaningful connectiveness and relationship with our students, regardless of the fact that this is an online or remote or virtual setting. And I just applaud the innovation of our staff and faculty of trying to find ways to maintain meaningful connections with our students. So the virtual support hours seems to be working well. Moving into that second bullet, creating a general assistance email. As you can imagine, a myriad of questions are coming in and they're all across the board. We made a decision to focus as much as possible, any inquiries to our admissions@mpc.edu as the main hub, not the only hub, but the main hub that we would direct most of our inquiries to. What this does with the Fresh Desk program that A and R has, it gives us the ability to track and monitor any of the tickets that are coming in. And as you can see on the little chart that I provided, the difference in the uptick between March and April. And the tickets received, the tickets resolved, and the unresolved tickets. If you go to the last column, the tickets unresolved for the month of April, very last column, second row, you see there's 233 unresolved tickets. This does not mean, this is not necessarily a bad thing. This is something that's maybe additional follow-up. A student has asked for a pass, no pass. A student has asked for a EW grade. A student has asked for a refund. All those need to be processed manually. So they're in the hopper. And the irony of it, as this uptick has happened, we've actually, people are working remotely. So we don't have, we're not at full force. But what we have is increased the amount of hours for A and R staff to be able to address these in the most efficient way. We still think we're in line with our service level objective of a response within 48 hours. Almost all of the tickets received do get some type of response by one of our staff members. So I just wanted to highlight that. Going to that third bullet, created a one-stop center. Just, it's important to know that there's still needs that our students are experiencing. And with that, we decided to find a way to distribute key basic needs and other resources to students through an appointment or a scheduled basis. So we're distributing Chromebooks, we're distributing our food pantry items. And the numbers that you have there, we were up about 40 Chromebooks that we've distributed to date and about 55 or a little over 50 of the food share. And you see what that contains. We were primed and ready to get significant more. But for some reason, that isn't coming to fruition as expected. So we have some other thoughts in mind of what we might want to do to increase the availability and access for our students. Coming to MPC at this time, we're up on the hill. It's a deliberate effort to come there. If you go to our communities, the food share areas are just, the lines are enormous. So we are investigating or bringing it up to cabinet to see the feasibility of maybe having a single distribution center at the Marina Ed Center to allow for Chromebook and food share items to be distributed from that location. Obviously, that would take coordination between administrative services and student services that if we were out there, that's another building that we're opening. So, but we are looking at ways to increase the availability of these items that are still available. On that same note, I didn't include this, but what we did do is a survey. And working with Pre, we were able to survey students. The survey basically had three components to it. It was a very, very brief survey, but yet nonetheless, we asked students what they need, what information they need and what help they need. We asked them whether or not they have basic needs such as housing, food, a place to study. And the third item we asked is how can we improve their communication? And the fourth item that we had was an optional question about, do you, if you provide us contact information, can we contact you? On that fourth item, we received about 40 responses of students wanting us to contact them. And we have done that, completed all those 40 and worked with those students. The survey was just out for one week. We had over 324 responses. And the responses ranged, out of the 324 responses that we received, they were about needing information. It was categorized in physical and emotional health, housing, food, childcare, general financial assistance. Out of those four areas, the greatest need was in general financial assistance. So that's just important to note. Ironically, this is a survey that does not represent all of our students. But when it came to housing, food, childcare, and physical and emotional health, it wasn't, there were not large numbers in this particular survey that said they needed that support. Financial support was the largest that represented a group. So I just want to let you know that we did do a survey. And thank you to Pre and Rosaline for getting this out. Again, it went for a week, had about 325 responses within that week and got some good feedback. And we can look to do this again. But we want to make sure that we have a number of different surveys that are going out. So cabinet will work to see when is the best distribution time. In response to that financial need, just an update on that next bullet that speaks to emergency grants that Becky sort of alluded to initially. Some updated numbers there as we work collaboratively, obviously with fiscal services, the foundation and student financial services to bring individuals back on campus for the purpose of distributing financial aid to our students. At this point, with about a month into it, we distributed over 500 grants, totaling about almost $150,000 in resources. We have redirected some of our restricted fund, promised funds that were directed towards other things to move another significant amount of money into the emergency grant pot because we've exhausted the initial allocation that we put forward. So we're taking some more of our promised funds, putting them in that emergency grant funds in addition to what the foundation is getting. That's going to allow us to get more resources to our students for the remainder of the spring semester. So that's just some updated information there. If we go on to the bullet that represents developed a student outreach and assistance system. In working with our partners in academic affairs, we all realized that there was a need for us to reach out to students. And what was the most efficient mechanism to do that? So I applaud Lakeisha Bradley and her team with coming up with a mechanism by which we can reach out to our students and allow our campus community to complete a request form. In the first week of the request form, the request was to allow us to see who, what students they would want us to follow up on. And within a week's time, we received over 200 responses from faculty and staff. At today, we've probably navigated through two-thirds of those students that we reached out to. And you see there listed sort of a series of areas or clusters of issues that were raised and working with the students through that. Each of these follow-up sessions are anywhere between a half an hour and an hour. So it is labor-intensive, but worthwhile gaining a lot of good information. But it is something that is requiring us to put more staff time than normally allowed it, but definitely making a commitment to continue to do that. And then the other couple items, join the PAC Day, which is our focus on high school students, bringing them on to graduating seniors, bringing them on to campus. We've gone virtual with that. Thanks to Kelly Flettis and Diego. And by the way, Diego's a keeper. We've gone to a virtual format for that. And they've come up with a series of online and virtual workshops that are very intriguing. Tomorrow, we're doing a mixer with our high school partners to prime them for this May 1st event. And we're excited about that. That will give them a little preview so they can help and support our students that may be matriculating to MPC. And then lastly, the student services video message that was sent out. We actually did three of them. One was directed to our current students. A second was directed to our high school partners. And the third was directed to our new incoming potential students. Pretty much the message was the same, but the header was specifically directed to each one of those populations. So we're very proud of the internal work that we were able to do to get this going. With that, I probably went more than expected, but I can try to answer any questions that may be attributed to the report.
Thank you, Larry. Are there any questions for Larry from the board? I will say, the three questions I had you addressed in your comments, so thank you for that. And I enjoyed watching the one video that was linked. It was nice to see people's faces. And I can imagine the warm feeling that students got when they saw those faces as well.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any member of the public who would like to ask a question, make a comment on the student services report? Star nine or participant tab. All right, seeing none, we will deem that report received and appreciate Mr. Walker and your team for everything you're doing to make sure our students have access to the resources they need to make it through this time, whether that be actual financial resources or food or just emotional support and counseling. Okay, so we've been sitting for about an hour and five minutes. So we can take a quick break and then come back. Or we could, depending on how folks feel about consent, we could do consent and then come back after that. You want to do consent?
Good idea.
Okay, so we'll do consent and then we'll take a break. So moving on to section seven, we have the consent calendar, which is items A through N. Is there any member of the board that would like to pull a consent item for question or make a comment?
I'd like to pull item F and maybe item G. I'm not sure about item G.
All right, F and G. I just want to make a comment on item E. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item from consent? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda, which would be everything except for EF and G.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, Jorin?
Takes a minute. Chair Anderson?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stack? Trustee Green?
Hi.
Trustee Dun Gusterson?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, I guess we probably could have done E on that one as well because all I wanted to do was appreciate the detail that was provided on the different reasons for the transfers. So with that, we'll go to trustee Stack, 7F.
You do it now or you do it when you come back from a five-minute break, if you prefer?
No.
No.
So that's fine with me. Just in general, I'm thinking that the monthly financial statement, which people actually do for our benefit, is something that ought to be not on the consent agenda, but on our regular agenda because it forces us to, or it encourages us, not forces us, but encourages us to spend a little bit more time dealing with the financial aspect of our house. And that, of course, as we all know, that's one of the most important responsibilities we have to make sure that the finances are okay. I have a specific question about it. And it has to do with the self-insurance fund. So the self-insurance fund is, we can see if we look at the table, actually, it's both components of the items that are of the attachments. We are at about 90% of the amount we have that we had in our self-insurance fund in terms of encumbrances and expenses. We're what, three quarters of the way through the year? This is as of March 31st. We go to June 30th. I'm wondering, should we worry? What do we have? And how do we worry? And how do we respond to this particular item, which looks to me like it might go over budget significantly? That's the question.
And thank you very much for the question, Dr. Stack. And I think at this time, we are monitoring that very closely. The reason why the expense is a bit higher than what would be equivalent to 75% through the fiscal years because we have yet to receive or been notified of our insurance rebates or the abatements of our insurance or our stop-loss reimbursement. So as those numbers come in towards the end of the fiscal year, they're netted against the expenditures to bring that balance down. So we will see a reduction of our self-insurance expenses once we get more information from our stop-loss providers as well as our reinsurance and debatement providers towards the end of May and early June.
Thank you.
And you had a question on 7G as well, Lauren?
Just a general question. I like having that kind of information presented to us. And it's certain, but on the other hand, I know that we almost never talk about it. And in fact, those of us who have been around for a long time, we're kind of educated by a previous vice president of administrative affairs to not look too closely at the numbers because they never reconcile with any of the other things that we were ever given. So, and he explained a little bit about why that might be the case. So I'm not sure that we need to keep that on anything other than the consent agenda. But I was thinking about it anyway. So it's just a general comment. And I have no specific comment at all about it now.
Okay. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve items 7E, 7F, and 7G on the consent agenda?
No move.
All right, so we heard motion by trustee Stack, second by trustee Green. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Anderson?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stack?
Hi.
Trustee Green?
Hi.
Trustee Dun Gusterson?
Hi.
And trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Thank you, unanimous.
Great, thank you. All right, so my clock says it's 5:12. So you guys want to come back at 5:25? About a 10-minute break?
That works for me.
So I would encourage you to mute your lines and turn your video off for the next 10 minutes. And we'll see you back in 10 minutes or so.
Hi, Jorin. It's Vince.
I love your picture.
Yeah, I normally, that's, I was actually taken back in the film days.
The film days.
We had no idea what was on the back of that newspaper when the picture developed.
Into new business site. Do we need to take a roll call when we come back from a recess? I don't think so.
Where did my thing go? No, we do not.
Awesome. All right, so that will go right into new business item eight A, which is an action item to designate the third week in May, May 17 through 23rd as Classified School Employee Week. Mr. Mark?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson. And this is something that we ask the board to consider each year to acknowledge the wonderful team of classified staff that we have here at MPC. We would ask that May 17 through 23rd be recognized as our classified appreciation week. Historically, we've lined that week with a bunch of exciting events, such as a root beer float event, which our team put on. But ultimately, given the circumstances, we may have to do some alterations to the plan this year. But nonetheless, we think it's very important for the week to be designated as our classified appreciation week and would love for the board's consideration of approving that week as such.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
There any discussion from the board?
A resolution that goes with the designation?
Excuse me?
Well, I said, do we usually have a resolution that goes with the the with this item? In fact, we even talk about a resolution in the item. I don't see one. Is that because I'm looking at the wrong place?
There's not.
It wasn't attached.
Okay.
Is there a resolution?
Normally, in the past, we've attached it under where it says background. It's never been an official, like where the board has signed the resolution because it is per the end code. And so yes and no. But it was not attached under the background nor as a document.
So what we can do is we can distribute the resolution that should have been attached to the board and the entire campus as part of our communication out this evening in regards to the board highlights document that we send out after the board meeting.
Sounds fine.
Sounds good. So any member of the public who would like to speak to the item? Remember, if you're on Zoom, you go to participants and you can raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Chair Anderson?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stack?
Hi.
Trustee Green?
Hi.
Trustee Dun Gusterson?
Hi.
And trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, so next we're going to go to item eight B, which is an action item to approve the MPC and MPC TA Memorandums of Understanding Supplemental Workload Factors and Reassign Time and Spring 2020 Faculty Compensation for Online Transition Due to COVID-19 Pandemic. Mr. Mark?
Yes, thank you very much. And in front of the board this afternoon, we have two separate MOU agreements with our CTA partners. The first MOU for consideration is Exhibit F, Supplemental Workload Factors. This MOU is to adjust the language in the current three-year CBA to reflect our existing processes and is nothing more than a correction of language within the existing contract. The second MOU, the COVID-19 Response MOU is a MOU for the board's consideration that would recognize and compensate our faculty for the additional work in transitioning the online instruction and transitioning their courses to online instruction over the last several months. In addition to that, it would also provide a technology fund for our faculty to continue to provide the excellent instruction that they are doing so at home with additional technology tools that would be available to them. So I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the two MOUs.
Any member of the board who has a question? All right, seeing none. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the board to approve the MOUs.
So moved.
All right, I heard trustee Dung Gusterson, can we take you as a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, great. So we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Chair Anderson?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stack?
Hi.
Trustee Green?
Hi.
Trustee Dun Gusterson?
Hi.
And trustee Johnson?
Hi.
That is unanimous.
Great, and just appreciation to the staff and in MPC TA for the hard work and making sure that all this gets resolved so that our faculty can be justly compensated for their work. So with that, we will move to new business item eight C, which is an action item to authorize the student trustee to have an advisory vote and the ability to make and second motions.
So moved.
Can we? Okay. David, can you tell us about this, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, thank you. And real briefly, education code allows student trustees within the California Community College to have an advisory vote. In order for that advisory vote to be established, governing boards of trustees must approve the advisory vote on an annual basis. So this is coming to the board for their consideration to approve the incoming student trustee, starting in July, to have an advisory vote for the 2021 academic year.
Thank you. And we had a motion from trustee Johnson, and I believe it was the second from trustee Stack. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? All right, and I'm assuming there's no, is there any discussion from the board before we call for a vote? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Yes, Chair Anderson?
Hi.
Vice Chair Stack?
Hi.
Trustee Green?
Hi.
Trustee Dun Gusterson?
Hi.
Trustee Johnson?
Hi.
Unanimous.
Great, thank you. All right, well, Robert's not here for us to ooze appreciation on him, but I I know I certainly value the voice of the student trustee on our board and look forward to continuing to have that voice at our table. So next, we have action item eight D. We need eight D? Yeah, so this is the action item, Board Approved Superintendent President's Search Committee with recommendations, categories, and numbers of participants, criteria, and due dates for submission for search committee participants. Trustee Dun Gusterson, can I ask you to provide the board with some commentary on our ad hoc meeting process?
I misunderstood. I thought you were going to do that.
I'm happy to do it if you are, if you would like.
Yes, I wasn't prepared.
Okay. So following our special meeting, the ad hoc committee met to take a look at the formation of a search committee to initiate our search process for the superintendent president of permanent. And we focused this discussion on the categories of folks across the campus and the community that should be a part of our search committee, the number of each group, and how we might invite or receive nominations to that committee and a timeline for doing so. There is urgency to the the issue, as there is a desire from the board to try and have made this appointment by November timeline. So what you see before you is our recommendation. And we, for those that maybe can't see the screen, we're recommending that there be one district administrator, either a vice president or a dean on the committee, and we would be requesting two referrals from that group. The board ad hoc would send out the invitation to that group. We were asking for one representative from the managers, supervisors, and confidential group. And we'd ask the HR to send out that request for two referrals. We would ask, we were looking to have three faculty members represented on the committee and ask the academic senate to coordinate the submission of five referrals. Classified staff also would are would have three representatives and looking to the CSEA to refer five candidates. Community members would have three representatives. And we had a discussion since that update, since this initially, we had requested five referrals, but we were thinking that potentially, since we would be asking board members to make these referrals, that you could refer two to three individuals. There were some additional thoughts on this one that aren't indicated here, so I'll share them. So they wouldn't necessarily have to be someone that resides within your trustee area, but they would be someone who resides within the district. And the reason we are suggesting that it be two to three referrals per trustee as opposed to just one is that we're not necessarily asking you to confirm with anyone beforehand their interest or ability to serve on the committee. And so we wanted to have a robust pool to make sure that the criteria that are listed below can be rounded out. And so you would submit those referrals through Jorine with a name, location of residence, and any sort of background information about their professional affiliations, qualifications, connections to MPC, just assuming that we, as the ad hoc, don't know who they are. So then from there, we are recommending that there be two students on the the committee and that the ASM PC would refer four individuals. I had a conversation with our ASM PC president about some of the criteria that might go along with for students to be recommended. It was thought that a requirement should be that the students have successfully completed at least two semesters at MPC and have a commitment to be enrolled in spring 2020 to be considered for appointment. And then preferred but not required criteria would be some level of involvement in a campus committee or student group, previous interaction with the current or most or most recent superintendent president and enrolled in a course of study leading to attainment of an AA or ADT. So those last three would be preferred but not required. The only requirement for a student would be successful completion of two semesters and continued commitment to continually enroll in the spring.
Yuri, I'm sorry, can I ask, would that be continuing as a full-time student?
It wasn't necessarily that they were a full-time student, no. But one thing that we, the committee did discuss is that the ability for this board today to make some adjustments to these recommendations, as well as the desired criteria characteristics for committee members. So we can talk about that in just a minute. Then we also wanted to invite a foundation board member or to participate and would be looking for the from the to the VP of Advancement to refer two names to us. And then obviously, trustee Dun Gusterson and myself would be on the search committee as well. And before we talk about our, so next, we had identified some of the criteria or desired characteristics for individuals to serve on it. So when people are thinking about who they might refer to the committee, obviously, an ability to collaborate. We want to see diverse representation in all sorts of areas of diversity. We asked that they share the board's commitment to advancing equity in our work. And one of the, also that they have an availability to meet between May and November. So we're looking to have a very rigorous time schedule, and so we want to make sure people are available. We're expecting those meetings to happen primarily via Zoom, so hopefully will help folks. And then in terms of the process, so assuming the board today approves this recommendation or makes minor tweaks and we walk away, we would initiate the invitation via the different groups that are outlined to submit referrals to the committee. Those referrals would be due by May 6th, and then the ad hoc committee would use the criteria that this board has approved to go through all of the referrals and form a committee that meets our expectations primarily around the, well, the criteria that are there and any others that you would add to that. So there you go. That is what we talked about. Anything that you feel like I missed, Marilyn, or misrepresented?
No, I would just simply say that the reason why we asked for more people than we actually wanted on the committee is that in order to achieve a balance on the committee, it it takes a little give and take. In other words, we expect that all of the candidates that are nominating would would perform very well. But in order to have a balanced cohesive committee, we can look at the whole and and make those choices, I think, appropriately. A question I have, do we need to bring this back to the board for approval or ratification, Yuri?
It's listed as an action item today, so we can make any modifications we want now and and approve and move forward. So the board's being asked to approve the categories of participants. So tell us if we missed any group or if you feel like any group should not be representative of the committee. And then the number of participants from each of those groups, as well as the criteria that we would use to evaluate all the candidates.
I, if I can jump in. Yeah, I like very much what you set up there. As far as bringing it up for the students, I asked the question if it was full-time. I didn't need it to be full-time. I would want to see it because of the COVID and all the impacts on students. But perhaps we could require nine units that they currently be taking. Except that would be summer, so that won't work. Let me brainstorm with myself here. I'm sorry.
Because it's, that was one of the things too, you know, whether they were going to be enrolled in summer, so is
Yeah, let me back up.
State a commitment about fall.
Yeah. But they they did want to see the student have two consecutive semesters, right? So they they've had a a full year of enrollment?
They, it wasn't articulated as two consecutive semesters, but to having completed two successful, successfully completed two semesters. So, but if you, we all feel that it needs to be consecutive, we can certainly stipulate that.
Well, what what's some feedback from anyone else on that?
Have another concern about the students. I got three concerns in total. And I'll just quickly go around them. First of all, it looks to me like you have a size of 16, which is an even number. Just in general, I believe you always want to have an odd number of people on the committee because there's a possibility, maybe not a likelihood, but a possibility that there are going to be some tight votes and you don't want to have an even vote. So that's why in general, that's why there's five people on our board, seven people on some other boards, et cetera. All system. So I think you need an odd number. In terms of criteria, the third thing I have, Rosalind, has to do with the student thing. In terms of the criteria, I think those are all wonderful criteria. You're missing, I think, an extremely important criteria on one more. And that is, these people have to have an ability to look at the big picture. Quite often, if you don't, if you don't control for that, you get people who are interested in their own programs, their own departments, and they're focused on what their their parochial needs are rather than what the college's needs are. So I think it's appropriate to not only have an ability to collaborate, that's, I think that's So I think it's appropriate to not only have an ability to collaborate, that's, I think that's incredibly key. I also think it's, it's an ability to have, to look at, to understand the big picture, to be focused on the big picture. Essentially get past your own parochial concerns. On the student trustee. This is our trustees, this is kind of a tricky one. You have the thing going from May to November. And you're, you probably misspoke because you were talking about a commitment to be a student in the spring. This is the middle of the spring already.
Yeah, I'm at fall, thank you.
Yeah, the committee will go from May to November, including the summer. But one of the hardest work for the committee will actually be occurring in the fall with this, with the timeline that you, that has to be given where we are now. So I haven't, you know, if a student wants to be on the committee and is totally gung ho and focused totally. It's May and they're doing all this stuff and, and in the fall, they're in, in Nashville, Tennessee, at Vanderbilt. That's really tough for them to be involved.
So the, the thought was that they would be at M P C in the fall. So they're enrolling at M P C in the fall.
Okay, you have to, I'd understand that. Okay, that, that makes perfect sense.
Okay. Did you have a thought around which? Guys, I'm in a meeting. Which group we might add an additional representative from to bring it to an odd number?
I would probably say another foundation member. Or another community member.
I think it's appropriate to have an equal number of faculty and classified. You have three of each, and I think, I think that's great. In the past, the classified people have, have sometimes been content with a smaller number of people than, than the faculty. But I think in general, it's a bad idea. Faculty and classified are equally important to our, to our mission. And I think it's appropriate that we represent them both equally, both closely.
Well, that doesn't solve the problem.
Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong. You, I believe have told me in the past that you actually never voted. You chaired the search committee, but you never voted. So what I, what I am thinking to propose is that the two board members would sit on the committee, but we would have one vote.
I suppose you could do that. I'm, I, you're correct. I, I always, I've done this, as you know, a number of times now. I've always made sure that, I've always made sure that all the committee at the very, at the outset and wherever else it was appropriate. That I'm going to get my, my, my time at the water fountain later. And I don't want to take, I don't, I think it's inappropriate for, for the, the board member who's running it or board members to have, you know, two gulps, whereas everybody else just gets one. So that's why I always declined to vote and made sure that everybody understood that I was not going to, going to vote on, in the committee. But you could, but that's an unusual thing to do. And, and there are a lot of committees that, you know, don't want to do it that way. So again, I'm not, I'm not providing an answer. I'm telling you the reason why I never voted. I think it's a wise thing to have the, the board members not vote on the committee, but that doesn't solve the problem because there's two of you.
Yeah, I tend to agree and had. We had talked some in the committee about, or the ad hoc, about the possibility of an additional district administrator, one VP, one dean. But, you know, so we've had a suggest, so Rosalyn, you suggested an additional foundation member. Can you talk a little bit around that thinking?
No, I was, I was thinking an additional foundation member because I know that the, the foundation is plays an intricate role in our, our college. And Rick mentioned an additional community member. And I think foundation members are also community members. So it's kind of, you know, getting a two for one in that deal. And then Lauren mentioned the equality in the faculty and classified. So just looking at, just looking at the numbers with the visual that would bring that representation up to a two. You know, at the bottom with the students in the board. So that was just kind of really what I, my criteria for that.
Yes, if you think about it from the, the perspective of three and three. And from the administrators, two. I suppose you could easily justify doing a third administrator somehow, either a vice president and a dean or, or some other way of doing it. That gets you to an odd number.
So one new group that, that we included specifically in this one was the management supervisor confidential group. And I'm not a hundred percent sure on the size of that cohort of employees. And if it would be appropriate to increase their representation and, or not. Is Kayla still on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Kayla, can you speak to, you know, how many folks are in that employee group?
So in our management supervisor confidential group, there's about 30 people. When we have our management supervisory confidential meetings. We are including the admin folks in that group. Because as far as administrators, that is the deans and the VP. So they're a much smaller group, but the management group is about 30 people.
So this was a, a new group to consider. And we, we went back and forth a little bit on this, Marilyn. So I don't know if it, we'd want to consider increasing that group of representatives versus the foundation board?
I'm just concerned about getting the committee too large.
Well, so this would be, so I guess we're looking at adding one person. And so it's where would we like to add that one person?
Or do we want to consider subtracting one?
And where would you do that?
Well, that's why I suggested having one, if there was an issue that, that two trustees would have one. Because we get, we, we make the final decision.
And you're going to be voting, obviously, as a trustee when it comes to the board. So I kind of follow Lauren's about neither of you having a vote on it. But that doesn't help us, of course, because that removes two. But I do like, I, I yield to Rosalyn's idea of increasing one more foundation member. Because they're already showing their interest and their commitment to M P C.
Okay, so with that, the other issue that Lauren brought up. Okay, so right now we'll put on the, the table, one more foundation member. Was the criteria ability to look at the big picture. And I, I think it's a totally appropriate one that is good for us to add to the list. So is, were there any other criteria or desired characteristics that people, that the, the board would like the ad hoc to be considering as we look at all the names that come to us? All right, seeing none. And then the student. So we clarified that we meant they would be committing to enroll in the fall. And they would have completed two semesters. So, and just want to make sure folks are comfortable with the so the required criteria for students is successfully completed two semesters. And a stated commitment to enroll in the fall. And the preferred characteristics would be let me see.
Working towards, working towards a certificate or an A A degree.
And in, in a campus.
In a campus, yes.
Yeah. And if there's any level of previous interaction with the current or, or former superintendent president. So they kind of have a sense of what that person's role is on the campus and in the community. Okay, so, and then the other thing that is different about what you're seeing in front of you on the screen and what I articulated is that board members will be able to submit two to three names for community members to the committee for us to consider. And again, just outlining the, the person, the, the names don't need to be for people who are within your trustee area. Anywhere in the district is fine, but we would like to know where they live. And any connection, relationship they have to M P C. And any sort of professional or personal experience that makes you believe they would be an addition, or a positive addition to the search committee. And you would submit those to Joe Rine, who would then just share the names and information with us, but not who, which board member submitted them. And then the last thing is that we would get this out as soon as possible and be looking for all the various campus groups to, to share back referrals by May 6th. So with those changes. I would entertain a motion for the board to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendation around the formation of a search committee, including members and desired characteristics and timeline.
Second.
We have motion as second. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to the motion on the floor? And again, you can use the, oh, I see John can always handle it right up. John, you are unmuted. Please speak.
Thank you. And I really appreciate all the work that you're all doing to help move us forward with this very important decision. And I know it's next to an impossible kind of scenario to get right in any case where you're trying to decide how to proceed. But I did want to point out, just from my perspective, board members aside on the committees, we're taking those of you who are participating out. With a fairly large committee, you have very few folks, perhaps one or two, who actually have a working knowledge of what it takes to run a college from an administrative standpoint, which is one of the primary functions of the person we're looking to hire. And so you might consider the number of people with an administrative knowledge, working knowledge of administering a college. Being a little bit greater in the vetting process here.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, Larry, you want to say something? All right, go ahead. Let's see, hold on, just a minute. Okay.
Hello, yeah, I just want to concur with sort of what John is alluding to. I see the membership, obviously, this is a broad-based group. It looks great. But I just think considering the, the VP and the dean play very, very different roles at our college. And having a VP is a direct report to the president. The others aren't. And they bring different perspectives to the table that I think are important. And as John has mentioned. This is a very, very important position, as we know. It is the only employee of the, the, for the board to hire. But I do think that there is an interaction and an engagement at the administrative level that, that is important to consider. So I just wanted to add that in. When you look at district administrators, there is a difference. The VPs are direct reports to the president. They work in the cabinet function. The deans are not part of that. But they play an integral role in balancing the administrative lens with the faculty and staff. They're, they play a primary role. They're the middle management that really is a, the glue to many of what every employee is important. But the deans play a significant role. But it is a very, very different role than a, than a VP. So I just wanted to offer that in consideration as you finalize your membership on the committee.
Great. Thank you, Larry. All right. And next we'll go to Suzanne. You should be unmuted.
Hello, can you see me?
Yeah.
Oh, great. So I was going to concur with what Larry and John said. I worked for the VP of Admin Services for about 18 years and previous to that, a dean, but I've been there a while. And I see how often they have to meet on issues, whether it's in cabinet, just one-on-one. And I really think the, that close working relationship that happens in cabinet probably need to really consider having a second admin person there, VP or dean. Just because the tremendous amount of work that has to happen between those individuals. The relationships and the collaboration. So I just want to concur with that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so next we have Sean, who's raising her hand via chat. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Yuri. And thank you, everyone. I know this is a, a huge responsibility and I really appreciate the work that's done into it. And I just wanted to add my voice in support of John and Larry and Suzanne's comments. I think they made some very important points and, and I won't go into any more detail than that. Just say I, I, I concur with their comments. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll also note that Wendy Bates via chat conferred with John and Larry's comments as well. So is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on the motion on the floor from the public? So again, you can either go to participants and raise your hand, or if you're just on the phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for additional discussion on the motion. So I believe, Mr. Johnson, you made the motion?
I, I think I made. Yeah, and so, and so hearing, hearing the voices, you know, definitely are meaningful. And it's definitely worth further conversation and consideration. You know, because it does make sense. So that, that's great. And I probably would have, well, not probably, but I would have taken all that into consideration prior to making the decision. So I am open to, you know, going back and reconsidering the comments that, that were given and looking at increasing that number in the administration. And also, we heard from Kayla in regards to the M S C group. That sounded to me like there was a great possibility that we'd get an administrator out of that group as well. So just to, to throw that on the floor for a little bit of discussion as well. Okay, Rick.
Yeah, I concur. I, I think hearing from John and, and the rest made it very clear. And I would certainly agree with your motion if you're changing it to adding one more administrator and keeping the foundation at where it is. Is that what you said?
Yes.
So if you're making your motion, I'm seconding your amended emotion.
Are we there yet? Are we going to hear from?
Let's, yeah, let's have a little more discussion. Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
I'm thinking that, having heard that, I think that's, that's also very persuasive. You have a VP or a dean, another way of doing it, or a way of what you're going to do is to make two slots, one for a VP and another one for a dean.
And also, we discussed this at the ad hoc and, and I was certainly in favor of one of both. One thing that we talked about was the prevalence. One thing that we talked about was the prevalence of interims or acting that we have right now. And we have a sufficient pool of continuing persistent staff to, to draw from. But I think most of those contracts are in place long enough for people to navigate through this whole thing with us. And it seemed like if we had a second in that administrative group, VP or dean or VP and dean with the MSC group, you actually, in some ways, kind of get equal representation from, you know, faculty classified admin across the campus. So I would certainly support either an amended motion or if you wanted to withdraw your motion and make a new one, either way. Or I know Marilyn hasn't had a chance to comment yet on this conference session.
I'm very comfortable with the recommended changes.
So how, how do you want to do it? Do you want to amend your motion, Rosalind, or do you want to withdraw it and put in a new one?
Um, we can amend it.
Okay. So is it amended to have a second to members from the administration group, VP, dean? So we would then have, it looks like four referrals from that group and one foundation member.
Okay, sorry, but I, I got another question or point. If we're, and if we're amending that number for the, the administrator, VP or dean, can we put VP and dean with the number two? Because we mentioned wanting to have a VP and a dean.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
This is the board search committee, so we have the ability at this point to, to form it however we want. So a district administrator, VP and a dean, so there would be two from that category. We would recommend, we would request four referrals. And then we would have one foundation member with two referrals from VP advancement. And then the other change is that we continue, we're adding the criteria around being able to look at the big picture and the student criteria remains the same. Is that an accurate statement of your emotion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I continue to be a second.
All right, so, let's see, somebody's blinking at me. Okay, it's fine. All right, so we're going to go ahead and take a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Yes, thank you. Chair Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Steck.
Aye.
Trustee Green.
Aye.
Trustee Dungustason.
Aye.
And Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
The motion, are, the motion is unanimous with the revisions.
Awesome, thank you. And just appreciate all the board for your engagement in this, as well as members of the campus community and beyond. Thank you for the feedback and look for future recommendations from the ad hoc to come forward to the board this way with the invitation to, to help us make it better as we go along. So with that, we will move to item 8E, which is an action item to approve the memorandum of understanding dated April 8th, 2020 between the Monterey Peninsula Community College District and California School Employees Association, Chapter 245, regarding the coronavirus COVID-19 epidemic. Mr. Martin.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson. And in front of the board this evening is a tentative agreement with our CSCA partners in regards to the COVID-19 crisis. The MOU is through the end of this fiscal year, so June 30th. And the MOU establishes expectations between the CSCA team and the district regarding employment, communication and health and safety concerns for us to move forward with and operate under through the remainder of this fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from the board? I have a very cryptic note to myself that I don't understand anymore, so I won't ask a question. But.
That being said, I will move approval of the recommended motion.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Trustee Dungustason, a second from Trustee Green. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item, or the motion? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Chair Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Steck.
Aye.
Trustee Green.
Aye.
Trustee Dungustason.
Aye.
And Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Awesome, thank you. And I'll also say on this one and the other for CTA, I appreciated the names being there below the signature, so thank you for that. All right, so next we're going to go to item 8F, which is, which is an information item, an update on the facilities and technology master plan. And David, you going to start us off?
Yes, thank you very much. And I will grab ahold of the screen for a second so we can get a visual on the brief presentation that we have. As we all know, we have been working this semester on our five-year facilities and technology master plan. This plan not only is an important component of our comprehensive strategic planning, but it's also a requirement of California Ed Code and Title V for community college districts to develop a facilities master plan to ultimately support the goals and initiatives in the educational master plan. So it's really a trailing document to help outline the vision for our facilities and technology in order to support the goals of our board-approved educational master plan. So as we go through the presentation, we're going to start with the board's vision and direction. We initiated the planning process in February with a very good conversation at the board level. And the board provided its vision and direction for the development of the plan. And to recap from the February meeting, the board asked that staff develop to build a growing marina education center, to focus the plan around sustainability and resiliency measures, to ensure a participatory and transparent development process and to really emphasize engaging the campus as well as the broader community. The board did ask to be updated on the plan progress. Additionally, the board, as part of its vision and direction from February, asked staff to consider the future students and programs of MPC over the next five years. And then lastly, to ensure that the facilities and technology plan ultimately meets the needs of our campus and community. So after that February 2020 board meeting, staff went to work in developing a process and really initiating a participatory process to develop the plan that is partially done through today. So real quickly to jump to the process, in clicking that link as part of the presentation, it'll take you to the development process. As mentioned in the board's vision and direction, the process was to be participatory and it was to involve the community as well as the campus groups that we have here at MPC. So when looking at the plan, we are about halfway through the development process. So the facilities and technology committee, the green circle, really has driven the process and has solicited feedback and input from the different advisory groups, as well as the academic senate. That feedback and input has really initiated the development of the first iteration of the plan and really the first draft plan. And it went to our president's advisory group and is now currently here in front of the Board of Trustees. It's kind of a check-in process and really a opportunity for the board to review some of the work that's been done to date and provide any additional guidance or direction as we head through the final stretch of the plan development. So after this evening and over the next several weeks, we will take our draft plan out to the advisory groups once again. And ultimately, take all that feedback and input and put it together in a comprehensive first draft that will be presented to the Board of Trustees, hopefully by the June board meeting. To the left, we have our opportunities for community outreach. So these are the opportunities that our broader campus community has had over the last several months and into the next few months for opportunities to participate in engagement and development of the master plan. We've held numerous public calls. In the beginning of the semester, we were able to hold them at physical locations throughout our region. But now with our Zoom capabilities, we are hosting the public forums in a Zoom format moving forward. And we've done a, a great job in trying to market and advertise these Zoom meetings through different avenues of communication to the broader campus, such as neighborhood apps, as well as weekly and the Herald calendar updates and emails to broader governmental entities and municipalities throughout the area. So we're definitely trying to solicit feedback and input from our broader community to ensure that our plan is reflective of their needs. So now jumping back to the draft sections. So attached to this document is the official first draft. And instead of going through the official first draft, we're going to focus a little bit on the sections. And the comprehensive first draft is made up of five different sections. Section one of the draft plan includes the purpose of the plan, the process and its connection to the educational master plan. Section two develops the current facility condition assessment and really identifies where we're at today and establishes a baseline to consider future facility needs. Section three is future facility and technology needs. So this is where the feedback and input as to the future needs of our campus and our community would be identified. Section four outlines a framework for prioritizing facility and technology projects moving forward. Section five identifies funding options. And then lastly, we'll have an appendix which memorializes all of the campus community input that we received over the last several months. We want to make sure that regardless of what form the input was provided, that that input gets captured and memorialized in the official final document of the facilities technology master plan. So in looking at the highlighted sections, or excuse me, going back to the previous slide, the sections that are in red are the sections that will have an additional slide as we move through this presentation. So section number three are future needs. Some overarching themes have evolved throughout the development of the process. No matter what group was providing input or what group of stakeholders was engaging in the plan at that particular part of time, the campus and community safety and sustainability of MPC was an overarching theme within all of the conversations that we've had to date. In addition to campus safety and sustainability, enhancing the student and community experience while on MPC, a creative innovative learning environments and instructional classroom technology, really providing a 21st century, top-notch learning experience where the technology in the classrooms is really second to none. Providing campus-wide data infrastructure, ensuring that our entire technology footprint is up to date and we have the ability to provide expanded technology capabilities, not only through the hardwired connection of our, our computer network, but also our Wi-Fi and our cloud-based programs and softwares to really provide additional support and really give the students a first-class learning experience with our technology capabilities. Other themes have included program growth opportunities and instructional space expansion, modernization. Looking at community connections as well, looking at some of our CTE programs that train the frontline of our community, such as our first responders, our nursing programs, having performing arts and hospitality programs that would provide our community with a platform of wonderful incoming talent to fill the needs of our ever-growing and expanding job market over the last several years. And then lastly, in dovetailing to the previous comment, looking at our job development and placement. So looking at our CTE facilities and looking at where we have opportunities to expand the options and the availability of program offerings for students to come to MPC and enter the workforce directly with a high-paying living wage profession. So in regards to the campus discussions to date, we've had numerous discussions and these are some of the overarching themes of the future needs of MPC through these preliminary discussions. Now jumping down to section number four of the plan, which is really our project prioritization framework. One of the key concepts of this plan is for us to be nimble in our prioritization over the next five years. So instead of specifically prioritizing projects today and being held to those prioritizations as our campus needs and our community may change over the next several years, we have identified categorization buckets, which will be used to help guide future conversations. Category A projects are health and safety projects. Those are the projects that will take the highest prioritization. Category B, we have campus and program expansions. So whatever project will allow MPC to serve more students, to grow our programs, to expand our course offerings will be a category B project. Category C projects are modernization. So these are projects that won't necessarily allow us to serve more students or to grow our programs, but really bring all of our facilities up to an expectation of the year 2020. And then lastly, we have category D projects. These are complete campus projects. These are projects that are not directly related to in-classroom instruction, but essentially are needed for an overall operational campus. Projects like this include storage, they include faculty, staff and administration offices, any type of warehouse or facilities buildings. So they're not classroom-related, but ultimately they are needed for a operational community college campus. So in looking at those four categories, we are avoiding the temptation to specifically rank current needs and really focusing on setting the framework for future discussions as we embark on the next five years of comprehensive strategic planning. Now moving down to the next slide, we have our funding options. We do have a section in the master plan, section number five, which identifies potential funding sources. Obviously, with any public K through 14 entity, the state and local facilities and technology bond is really the primary source of funding. MPC's last bond was in 2003 and we have expended all but approximately eight million of those bond funds remaining. Additionally, there are alternative funding sources that are available to all districts. And these are a few examples. We go into much more detail in the draft plan. But MPC, as well as other community college districts, can always lease their facilities and use the lease revenue to do modernization projects. We can offer community-based classes and collect fees that could ultimately go into a modernizing facility in which the classes are held. We can enter into public-private partnerships and/or solicit private donations. And we can also look at different types of financing sources, such as leased revenue bonds or certificate.
David, freeze for everybody too.
Yeah, we lost him.
He'll be back in a second.
Heard in the beginning of the presentation, we are about.
David, you froze on us there for a second. So I believe we were at public-private partnerships when we lost you.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize for not catching that, but I am unable to see everybody as I look at the presentation on my screen. So after public and private partnerships, we do have. So after public and private partnerships, we do have different types of financing. Options such as lease revenue bonds and certificates of participation. Ultimately, all of these items are described in much more detail in section number five. But I wanted to highlight that we have been having discussions in regards to the different types of funding sources. To make our facilities and technology plan a reality one day. So I'm flipping down to the next steps. If I, if I recall the, if I'd asked the board to recall the visual in the second or third slide. Of the presentation, we are about halfway through the process. We're going to spend the next month and a half. Developing and finalizing these items. We will continue to hold our scheduled public forums and continue to seek. Community input. We're going to reengage the campus committees and student groups. Now that we're about halfway through the process, we're going to take the work done to date. We're going to finalize it based on the feedback to date, and then we're going to go back out to the groups. To solicit more feedback and input as the plan continues to evolve and come together. We're going to develop additional drafts of the facilities technology master plan. We're going to send the document to graphic and visual design. I know the document as it stands today is extremely text heavy. And as we work through the final portions of the comprehensive text portion, we're going to. Solicite our public information office to really make it a visually appealing document. And then hopefully get the final draft to the board in June for a first read and additional feedback and input. So with that said, that concludes the presentation. I appreciate a couple of moments to walk the board through and update. As to our facilities and technology master plan process, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, David. That was a really great presentation. Is there any member of the board that has a question or comment they'd like to make? I had one question that was, well, one, I just want to appreciate how clear the presentation was, how. Much you have, how the campus has clearly taken the board's direction around campus and community engagement and went to work on that. And wanted to, to get a better understanding of how have we been engaging and targeting our K-12 partners in this outreach? To get a sense of kind of their, their knowledge of the future that's coming to MPC and what their expectations and needs might be for our facilities and technology.
Sure, and thank you for that question. We have solicited their feedback and input through the campus forum. We have had members of MPUSD as well as the Monterey County Office of Education participate in the public forums. In addition to that, as we have gone to local governing boards throughout the region to present. Our dual enrollment documents, we've been really using that as an opportunity to ask for feedback and input. As to our facilities in that form as well. So we've actually done both boots on the ground feedback and input. But we've also gone through the public forum process to ensure that everybody from our local districts. As well as the County Office of Education is invited and is aware of our public forums.
Awesome. Thank you, David. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we turn to the public?
I was just gonna also affirm. David and everyone that's working so diligently, I've been able to attend. The last two virtual public forums and they've been very informative, so thank you and. Keep up the good work.
I don't know, did you hear me?
I did not.
Okay, any member of the public that would like to comment on the information item? Somebody is like controlling my screen. It's not me. All right, seeing none, we will deem this report received and. Say thank you very much, and as Rosalyn said, keep up the good work. We look forward to the next update on the plan. Okay, so it is now six thirty and our next item is related to the CCC T board. Do folks want to keep going or do you need a five minute break? Rick says keep going and he's usually our break guy, so. We're gonna keep going. All right, so item 8G is an actual item. The governing board considers and selects up to nine candidates to serve on the California Community College. Trustees Board. So I believe that we all, actually Lauren, can you just give us a brief CCC T board? Intro?
Sure, sure. The triple CT board is the, the board of trustees. It's our, it's our statewide organization for the Board of Trustees, the various boards of trustees for the 72, now 73 districts. We deal with, one of the things that, that the board does is it is half of the. Of the, the. The governance entity that, that works with, with the CCLC, which is the Community College League of California. CCLC serves many functions, one of which, an important one of which is lobbying essentially with the Chancellor's Office and with the. The legislature. So the, the triple CT board along with the CEO CCC, which is the, the. The board consisting of elected CEOs, together administers the, the Community College League. We have in recent years been getting much, much more involved with. Issues that are impacting, especially as more and more changes have come down the pike aimed at us from the Chancellor's Office and from the. Legislature, we've been getting much more involved in, in, in issues that are impacting colleges. No way that we hadn't before. So for example, as you know, I'm sort of on the, on the. The task force for the CEO task force for the, for the funding formula. And, and I'm happy to say that, that I've actually had an impact on that, that thing, but there are many other. Task forces and committees that are, that are. That are created by the triple CT board and populated by people who are on the triple CT board. So it's a very, very. Useful entity, much more so than I thought when I originally joined the triple CT board. I'm quite excited about the organization. And what its potential is and what its, its realized potential is already. I'm not sure I'm articulate about any of that stuff, but. I didn't realize if I was gonna have to say anything, so.
Well, thank you for doing that. Just to make sure, you know, we all have a shared understanding of what we're talking about. So our task today as a board is to submit. Sorry, I lost my screen. A, we, we are able to consider and select up to nine candidates to serve on the Community College Board. There are, there's triple CT board. Our district is to cast one vote, and so we need to come to some level of consensus. There are nine seats that are open. And there are 12 candidates. So I would. Suggest that we share the names of the, I'm assuming everyone has gone through the materials that were in the packet and. Come to some sense of who you might like to nominate. So share the names of the candidates that we would suggest the board. Vote for and then identify where we have overlaps and then just discuss where there might be differences to see if there's some consensus. At that point, we can share any of the criteria that we may have individually used to make our determination. And just know that we don't have to vote for all nine seats if, if we don't feel like we need to. So if that process feels okay with you all. I'm gonna assume that we're all gonna be recommending our own trustee for continued appointment on the board, so we'll just. Put Lauren on the list. And then let's see, Rick's already unmuted. So Rick, did you want to share any of the other names that you?
No, I actually want to listen to people who are doing because I found myself finding the people I didn't want. More than the ones I did want. But I also would like to throw out there that there is certainly an option of only voting for one person. And, and the reason that's important is because for so long on that board, it seemed that we were. Always under the thumb of Southern California on it, and by doing one, we, we have an ability. To ensure that we have a Central Coast person on that board. So I'd like to at least throw that out there. And I'm sorry, Lauren, if I embarrassed you. I can tell. But I do think that's important.
All right, Ross, when you're muted, who? Who were you considering?
So I have the opportunity at our last. Conference to hear a number of these folks. So of course, number, number one is our very own. Lauren and then like Rick did say, there had been conversation about us being very. SoCal heavy. And so I believe it was Suzanne Chan. Also representing North. Yeah, and so, and, and I liked, I liked her spill. I got to hear her. And then, and I like Barry, you know, and that's. I like Barry because, you know, we have a lot to converse about, like minded, and he's also a friend of Charlie's. Yeah. Yeah, and, and Pam is great. And I actually went to the. Got a portion of the African American caucus meeting in between hour closed and. Four o'clock meeting. And Pam was actually one of the speakers. It's recorded, by the way, if you guys want to go back and, and catch it. Think it was live on YouTube, so it should be there. So, I mean, I could pick nine, but I also hear Rick saying less, you know, let's stick to. A smaller number, but Rick, I want to know who you don't want.
I don't want to say that when this is.
Maybe we should hear who Marilyn wants before you tell us.
But I will tell you that it, it's very hard for me not to vote for Pam Haynes. Over the years dealing with her, she's so open to everyone, but I still will stick with Lauren's deck.
Okay, Marilyn?
Well, what I was going to say is I would vote to support all of the current incumbents. They seem to be working well together and they, they are, are. Uh, seem to be accomplishing some good things. And so, but I'm also there. I would also be happy to support just Lauren and perhaps Pam. Because I would agree with you. I think her leadership has been very good from the incumbents. As far as the new persons are concerned, I liked the criteria of what they wanted to do. From Barbara Dunshee and from Suzanne Lee Chan. I, they both spoke to the Student Center Funding Formula. They both spoke to student success. So I like the way they articulated that. And I think that Barry Snell as a CPA. Brings. Expertise that not too many of the other, others have. So many have come from the ranks of teaching or administration. And I always think that boards are good when they are balanced with different professions. So my recommendation would be to support Lauren number one, Pam number two of the incumbents. And then for the three new ones, it would be Barbara, Suzanne and Barry.
Great. Lauren? And my mom says if you're not willing to vote for yourself, no one should vote for you, so vote me.
Oh, well, it's nonetheless awkward. So, so I can tell you that I believe the incumbents are doing a great job and I don't, I don't dislike any of the incumbents. But you know, that's, that's to be expected since I'm one of them. I think there are a lot of good candidates among the, you know, there are six good candidates who are not incumbents. But I have worked with Barbara Dunshee, for example, I'll tell you a little bit about Barbara. She, she was, and don't, don't. Don't let this allow you to ding her for this reason, but she was on the site visit committee that resulted in the really bad. Accreditation report that we got, but she, it wasn't her fault that, that we got, that we got dinged in that accreditation report. And she came on her own to us and met with us afterwards. I, I think she's wonderful. I've worked with her closely on a couple of different, three different things now. I think she's really good. It's time for her to do it. I think Su Chan is also, I've only worked with her recently. She's, she's not a, a long term trustee yet. She's only been a trustee for two years, but she comes from a background of having been a city councilwoman. And, and boy, she's, she's got a lot of energy and, and I've worked with her recently. To create a, a survey that, that each of us is supposed to be filling out sometime in the very near future, if you haven't already done so. By having to do with best practices for running virtual meetings. So she, she's very, and actually Barbara worked on that committee with me too. So though, so they are both wonderful to work with. And I also am a fan of Barry. Barry Snell is a very interesting guy and I like him a lot. So if I were. Gonna do it, those are the people I'd vote for. It's not, but it's not because the other people aren't good. The other people are good too. It's just, those are, you know, there are some who are great. But everybody else is good on that list.
So I, I'm seeing Pam Haynes, Barbara Dunshee, Suzanne Lee Chan. Barry Snell and Lawrence Stack, and those were all folks that I had on my list as well as being in support of. I was really looking for again, kind of folks that can represent our NorCal perspective. Was a criteria for me. I also was interested in, in candidates who articulated some sort of. Authentic position around addressing equity issues and being willing to look at the intersection between education and social issues. So for, for that reason, I would also want to add Andrea Hoffman to our list of nominees. She's an incumbent and I just really felt that she was articulate in how she spoke about equity and housing and homelessness in her, her application. So I don't know if anyone has any issue with Andrea.
So no, just like Lauren was saying, well, and Marilyn, all the incumbent, incumbent. People are, were good, you know.
There was one that I did not think was so good.
And you want to say it is?
I just, I, I don't know, reading the application that, that was just not an application that spoke to me. For that particular individual. So are you suggesting that we?
I say it's very nice to not name names on the negative side.
So I mean, there is the one approach of, you know, some folks are saying all the incumbents are fine, but then there have been these. Specific names that have been all overlaps. And so perhaps we go with the overlaps.
Yeah.
And if there's anybody, so there wasn't an overlap on Andrea, but if there's anybody that somebody feels really individually strongly about. And there isn't a strong aversion to that person, and since you're saying the incumbents are fine, I would like to add Andrea to our list of. People we're voting for.
Like the, the, the concept of overlap, and so let me allow, allow me to overlap with you on that. I think Andrew's great. Andrew is a, is a, I just mispronounced her name, but she's, she's wonderful. She's really very good. She's, as you know, she's an administrator in the college as well as a trustee at LACC.
And then we don't seem so like, you know, just normal. And then we don't seem so like, you know, just NorCal centered.
That's right.
Unless we do just one person.
That's central Cal, by the way.
Yeah.
All right. So if there is nobody else, it looks like, did we lose Marilyn? Oh, there she is. Um, if there is no one else you want to throw on the list, uh, I would entertain a motion that we, let me try to get the language correct. Um, sorry, I'm just getting back to my agenda. Uh, the governing board considers and selects. Andra Hoffman, Pam Haynes, Barbara Dunshee, Suzanne Lee Chan, Barry Snell. And Lawrence Stack. To serve on the California Community College Trustee Board and directs that our vote be cast electronically. Is the, can I, would someone like to make that? I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, cycle from Rosalyn. Is there any member of the public would like to uh make a comment on the motion?
I would just like to, can I clarify that we are submitting the six names versus nine, correct?
Yes, just six names. All right, participants list star nine, seeing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly Chair Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Stack.
Except for me, aye.
Trusty Green.
Aye.
Trusty Dun Gusterson.
Aye.
And Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna have my mom come talk to you, Lauren. Alrighty, so we're on item H. Um. And I need two minutes. So if we could come back at six fifty-five, I would appreciate it. All right, so mute and stop video.
Yes, recording.
Oh, there you go. Uh, usually in the past, we've, we've either given all of the requests or given a portion of it and then, and then. Individual trustees made up the difference to, for their request. I think this year, I I hope we have enough money to do it. I would like. For a change to, for a change, at least in the recent past, to give them their whole request. They're doing important work. Nobody else is doing it. And and uh, and they need support. This is, as you might, you know, those of us who who deal with nonprofits. Can appreciate this is unrestricted money that we give them. It's not a lot, but it, but it helps them greatly because they can put it to where they really need it the most. So. spiel. I'll even, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion if you'd like me to, to uh, to fund. Uh, fully fund the, the requested twenty-eight hundred dollars this year.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, additional discussion from the board?
I would just like to simply say that Community Human Services is one of the integral agencies within our community. Providing really essential services. And I absolutely think um that MPC should. Should fund the total request of three thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars. It is still a bargain for what they give us.
I thought they requested twenty-eight hundred dollars.
I think the thirty-seven. Of students that they, that they have uh worked with this past year. I think that's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the total individual.
That's the total individuals. I thought that was the money.
None. Money is in paragraph three, twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Oh, there it is. I read right through that. Sorry.
It's a bargain. I wouldn't want to give them thirty-seven hundred more than they asked for because that's, it's a different kind of a precedent.
Well.
Yes.
Am I? Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Rick. Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, I agree. In years past, trustees did make up the difference. So we could get to the amount they were requesting. Um, the trustees did it personally. This year, I would agree that we. Allocate the money they're asking for. And then I'd also suggest to trustees. In the past, we wrote checks. Um, maybe we would want to think about writing the same amount of a check. As we did before personally to MPC for the COVID nineteen uh fund. That's not part of any kind of um uh, a motion at all, but something we might want to consider.
The contrary, there was lots of emotion in that.
Okay. Um, is there any member of the public that would like to speak to the motion on the floor that the board? Allocate twenty-eight hundred dollars to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget? Participant list, raise hands, star nine. All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Chair Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Stack. Trusty Green.
Aye.
Trusty Dun Gusterson.
Aye.
And Trusty Johnson.
Aye.
There's a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. All right, so now we are on information item eight I. Which is the review of the twenty twenty board goals and discuss possible modifications based on state of emergency. So um, as you recall, at our February retreat, we um. Well, we actually have a goal here. Board Effectiveness Three B, develop and implement a goal accountability plan to ensure board goals remain relevant. Throughout the entire academic year and that progress is being made towards their achievement. So at that meeting, we indicated that we would have. Quarterly check-ins at our board meetings starting in April. And so that's what this um is an opportunity to do. And um, I believe. Uh, you know, one, we would invite board members to kind of speak to the goals and where you feel like we've had some success. And then taking into consideration all that we heard tonight about what the campus and the district is doing to respond to the pandemic. Um, see if there's anywhere where we need to be adjusting our expectation on any of these goals or potentially. Um, scheduling a time to come back to, to modify the goals um in any way. So with that preface. Um, Rick's not on mute, so I'm gonna invite you to start.
You always do that.
It's because you're not on mute, which means you're ready to talk.
No, I forgot to go on mute. Um. I love our goals because we're always going back to them. Um, that was sincere. I really do. Um, I'm not sure. So I'm gonna turn it over to others. I don't know where, and I think others do, and probably Yuri, you've already thought this through. Where we can, where we can probably um fine tune them better to where we're at. Um, in this pandemic. But I, I know, I don't have a uh suggestion on anything new. Other than we can use these to continue through this very difficult time.
Yeah, and I would just say it's very difficult to support student success. When we're busy supporting student survival. And that's the way I look at what it's been for the last five weeks. And um, between David's excellent communication. Between the, the way that faculty and staff and administrators have pulled together. To completely turn this campus around to allow our students to succeed. As best they can, but it has been survival. And so I think. I would like to defer conversation on these goals really until we have a chance. Until the ground stops moving. Um, I think as long as it's moving. We're just having to, to adjust to whatever it is. Um, and where the excellent communication that David is providing is really. Really helpful. So that's what I would say having to do with the goals.
Thank you. Lauren or Rosalyn, did you want to come in next? It's a race, so you can unmute.
I, I'll say that, that I appreciate actually looking at these goals quarterly because it does remind us. But I think we're pretty much doing those things currently. As I read through the goals. There's nothing that leaps out at me as something that needs changing. But I think that given, given our proclivities to, to remain engaged and given our administration's. Perfect, wonderful focus on, on the situation at hand. I would think that if something comes up in the future, then we ought to. Revise the goals to meet the requirements of the situation. I don't see that there's any such need at the moment to do any changes at all.
Right. Rosalyn?
So I was gonna say something very similar to what Lauren said. We are um. Doing a good job with visiting like, you know, like we proposed we would. Um, I think that right now we are just embarking on our new normal. And so um perhaps, you know, if needed to visit before. Um, you know, the quarter ends, then I don't think that we would hesitate in any fashion to, to do so. Um, and so, so I'm, I'm good with these, you know, and just anticipating possibly looking at them. Again, a little bit sooner, um, you know, once we see where this next season leads us.
Yeah. And and as I look at the goals, you know, I see a couple that we identified, we've, you know, been able to accomplish. And and I think the, the bulk of the work for the board for the next few months is gonna be around um two B. Which we've initiated and um, and then there's some that are, are, our staff are really working to move forward for us. And seeing the community engagement and student voice influencing and knowing that, you know. Thinking about how do we maximize Marina Education Center, but you know juxtapose against the new reality of distance learning. And so, yeah, I agree. The ground is shaking. And that we, we stay the course. One thing I'll say that, you know, sitting here looking at this right now. And we had a number of goals around policy development. And I know that the academic senate was looking at issues related to faculty diversity. And we had some conversations around equity and I'm realizing that I walked away from our retreat with some responsibilities. That I haven't moved forward on. Um, and some of that is because. COVID nineteen happened like a day later, it seems like. Um, and I'm still very much interested in that, but also don't want to overtax. Our team. And so um, that's, I think it's, uh, you know, we look to staff to kind of. Give us a nod when, to say, okay, our heads are getting out of water and we can start on some of these other. Um, goals. I see Barry with your hand up. Go ahead, Marilyn.
I wanted to share with the rest of the board members that the Policy Subcommittee will be um starting our meetings. Next week. So we, we will pick up the ball and run with it. And thank you, Sean, for setting up a meeting date for us, or working to set up a meeting date for us.
That's great. Uh, okay, so it sounds like uh in general, we're feeling like we'll leave it right here. We'll bring it back. At least in a quarter. If we feel like we need to have a discussion sooner, we will do so. Um, but stay the course. And the team know that for the areas that are really more about operations, the board is fully understanding. And supportive of some of these goals, maybe not being at the top of mind because you're really working on that student survival. As Marilyn articulated it. Um, all right, so that was just an information and discussion. So next we have the Superintendent President Report.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson. And I'll be brief, um, as the monthly mailbag is attached. But in addition to the written report, I would just like to take a moment and once again. Uh, recognize the, the wonderful work that's been happening here at MPC. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to uh, once again, thank and acknowledge the board for, for your leadership. And engagement during this very challenging time. I'd also like that to take a minute. I know that you have heard from. Uh, different departments in the beginning of the uh board meeting this evening. But I, I would like to reiterate some of the wonderful things that are, are going on on our campus. And you know, starting in no particular order. Just thanking Academic Affairs and Dr. Canoli and his leadership. Uh, you know, the fact that we have moved forward with all but seventeen classes during this time. Is an absolute amazing accomplishment. And and under Dr. Canoli's leadership and the wonderful work by our faculty. And staff and academic affairs, it is really something that I believe as an institution, we should be very proud of. Our Office of Advancement, under the leadership of Becky Michael, uh, on the drop of a hat. Distributing hundreds of thousands of dollars to students in need and getting mechanisms set up for faculty and staff. And our community to contribute to help our most needy students and to do it all within a twenty-four hour to forty-eight hour time period. It was really just an amazing accomplishment by the Office of Advancement. Like to take a minute to recognize Larry Walker and Student Services. His leadership and the group in Student Services has done a wonderful job. In providing all of our services online. And not only providing the services, but Student Services has also. Taken a primary role in implementing a lot of the new guidance and regulation that we've been receiving from the state. And the team in admissions and records and financial aid have done a wonderful job in getting information. Operationalizing it and making it happen for our students, literally within an hour or two. So I would like to once again acknowledge Student Services under the guidance of, of Larry Walker. And then Administrative Services, I would like to uh thank Steve for his leadership and what a, what a time to join an institution. I would like to just acknowledge the administrative support that's happening in our IT department, in our fiscal department. And our custodial crew. Uh, our custodians come to work at a very late hour in the evening. So it's very easy not to uh recognize that there's a wonderful work that they're doing. But they come and they clean and sanitize our facilities to make sure that we have a healthy and safe place. For people to come back to one day. So I'd like to acknowledge the wonderful work of our Administrative Services, uh, our custodial team. And the whole group for really doing a, a top notch job. And then lastly, I'd like to recognize our pre-office. Uh, in a time of uh virtual communication, getting feedback and input. Uh, can be a bit challenging. And our pre-office has done a wonderful job soliciting feedback and input from our students, from our community. From our faculty and from our staff, so we can identify and react to the needs of our entire campus community. And our pre-department has done a wonderful job in ensuring that even in today's environment, we are still. An extremely collaborative and participatory institution. So I'd like to thank Dr. Pacheco and his leadership in the pre-office. And with that said, I'd be happy to take any questions on the verbal portion of that report or the April mailbag.
Any questions? Comments? Well, I will just say uh, in the spirit of giving kudos, David, it's our job to give kudos to you. And you have been doing an outstanding job um, leading this team and bringing them together. And allowing each department to really take ownership of the areas that they have specialty in and ensuring that our, our students in our district. Move forward and um have personally appreciated the communications that you're giving to, to us as a board. Uh, your responsiveness, the opening our campus to contribute to distribution of masks. That were so desperately needed and wanted in our community and, and making sure that MPC is, is a resource. Um, and known as such in our community. So we appreciate you and the work that you're. and the work that you're doing and the entire team. And as someone who is living COVID-19 every day in my work, I, I know that the, the stress that carrying the, the weight of all of these people and their lives on your shoulders, puts on your shoulders. And appreciate all of you for, for carrying that stress and caring so much about our students and our faculty and our classified and all of our staff to just keep folks moving forward and just want to say thank you very much. And to the board, thanks for your engagement tonight. I mean, it's nice to be doing business as usual. And to know that despite the challenges and the change that we've experienced, we've been able to quickly ramp up and continue to move the district forward and, and even make this a more transparent process for our community. Cause you know, we're recording meetings now and they're posted to the web. So hey, without any expense. So, um, thank you for, for doing that. I also wanted to give a thank you to Ms. Marilyn Dun Gusterson, because if I'm not mistaken, today is your birthday?
It is.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for spending so many hours of it with us. I wish I had taken my husband up on that offer of having a glass of wine while I was sitting here, but I thought that would be inappropriate. And then I don't know if Diane Boynton is on the call, but you know, in the midst of things last month, we missed an opportunity to wish Diane a happy birthday in April. And just want to know that we celebrate everyone for being alive and hope that you continue to have good health. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on the superintendent president's report?
I was just gonna second your kudos, not take a lot of time or space on, because we could, could, you know, forever. I did also want to affirm, you know, the work that, that everybody's doing. David's leadership, the, the faculty's willingness to, to respond so quickly to, you know, this, this COVID-19 crisis. I am just absolutely impressed with the way MPC has responded and moved quickly and efficiently, you know, for, for our whole community. So those are definitely words that, that I wanted to share tonight.
Thank you. Alright, so with that, we will move to advanced planning. And we know that May 17 through 23 is Classified School Employee Week. And we'll look for a resolution and announcement to the campus community on that. Final exams are coming, so best of luck to everyone. And Matt, don't miss those. Our next board meeting is scheduled for May 27th. It's a regular board meeting. And I guess we're still kind of, I'd saw survey go out around commencement, but I didn't necessarily see a response. So I'm assuming we aren't having a commencement ceremony, but we're still trying to figure out how are we gonna celebrate all those students that have completed their academic journey with MPC and look forward to hearing more about that. So unless there's something else for the good of the order, we will adjourn.
Yuri, if, if you don't mind, I obviously didn't read the end of the agenda. We usually have trustee remarks and we didn't do it this time. So I'm gonna give one anyway.
Okay.
We've all of the things that have been said tonight about the faculty, about the administration, about the school, about everything is is so true. And each one of us would certainly applaud that. But I really, really, really also want to applaud the students at MPC. When we think of everything that, that this faculty did, that the school did to get everything online, and yet these students have stuck with it. They've adjusted to it as much as they can. Some of their, their dreams were actually dashed. We're talking about commencement. We're gonna want to celebrate it. And I think of all those students who are the first one in their families to graduate from college. And it just, it, it breaks my heart that they're not gonna be walking through the line so we can shake their hands and hug them and do all those things that first-time graduates should be celebrating. So thank you to you all. This is hard on all of us. Yuri, I, I talked to my children on the phone, my grown children, and say, thank God, you're not a little kid. And I'm dealing with that. And you're doing that. And God bless you for that. So for everyone, just thank you to everyone and to our students. We love you and we celebrate you hanging there. Thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you, Rick. Alright. Okay then. Well, meeting adjourned, 7:20. Alright. See you all this afternoon.
Happy birthday, Marilyn.
Thank you. I'm going to celebrate now.
I will celebrate with you from afar.
Alright, that sounds good.
Since celebrating.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.